Would like to call to order the July 3rd, 2017 Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners Work Session. Welcome, everyone. First item on our agenda tonight is the approval of the work session agenda. Do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as presented? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And of course, one thing I did not mention, that includes the changes to the agenda on page 758. First up, discussion items. County Manager Concord Self-Guided Historic Walking Tour.
Diane Young sends her apologies for not being able to be here in person. This is a, of course, this is timing between the weekend and the 4th as a lot of people are out of town. But Concord Downtown Development Corporation had approached us about this historic walking tour they planned that it's tied in with an app on your mobile devices. So you can go from location to location and then get a little history of that particular location. There are actually four county-owned properties that are included in that. The Concord Library, the Historic Courthouse, the County Courthouse, and Rotary Square. You would just walk along and it has a, I don't know what you call that thing, a transponder.
This is the beacon that will be placed.
Several of the locations. We'll put them in certain parts of the building. It has enough of a range to carry outside. There's only one location. We'll have to put it in a secure fixture, and that's at Rotary Square. But this is the beacon, and I'll pass it down so everyone can look at it. And the app will bring up the history of the site. So that is the beacon that will go at Rotary Square, and it will tell the history of it all the way throughout the Red Pig Barbecue Restaurant, and so on, so forth. And that's brought up and passed that down.
So this cover that they show, we thought we would have to put a cover like that on all those buildings, which I don't think would be terribly attractive on our Historic Courthouse. But one of Kyle's staff has been able to go in and find that by putting them on a window, they actually, there's enough range for them that they can put them inside, so they don't have to mount them behind that case, except as he says, at Rotary Square. And we'll get a more appropriate cover for that one. So this is an item that I don't know necessarily need your approval. We felt like we should bring up to you and make sure you were all okay with us participating in this and having these on these buildings.
Okay, any questions for Kyle or Jonathan? Sounds like a pretty cool asset to give to folks.
So the app is available for Androids or iPhones, and you just download. I think the information may have been in there, but it was the, just the Concord Downtown Walking Tour. I think those were the key words Kyle and I both used to download it.
Okay, well, hopefully, we can promote that some more. Concord Downtown Walking Tour on the App Store.
Yep. We'll make sure that that is all our different ways of social media, that information is sent out.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving to item 3.2. Infrastructure and Asset Management Courthouse Master Plan Update.
Yes, and I'd like to call up the Honorable Judge McGee, Honorable Judge Hamby, and Chris from Mosley Architects. Chris, you can just grab a chair and bring it on up. All these gentlemen wanted to kind of come aboard tonight. We are at the point of concluding the actual update to the master plan and the space needs. That contract is about to run out, and at that point, we need to put out an RFQ submission for an architect for full-blown design in moving forward with the project. The intent of the project we've just done for the past year is to bring everybody together and refresh those numbers in terms of space needs, case counts, physical body count, and then try to extrapolate and put into a very preliminary floor layout to decide where we can put this and what type of renovations we'd have to be looking at to the current courthouse, because that will end up being one large judicial building all put together. So Angela, if you can click to some of the attachments. We've got option ones and option twos, and again, this is not design, this is just preliminary layout. But I wanted the judges and Chris to be here to kind of have some discussions, because there are some issues that are kind of holding us back from building it exactly the way that I think all the folks who use it had intended. And that's one of the height restrictions of the city of Concord in terms of being able to put all of the judges in a single wing themselves. So the footprint that you have to build the new building, which is where the parking lot is currently placed, is, provides some challenges for getting everything in there without going so high. And that's, of course, where we're going to put our new courtrooms. That's the bulk of it. And we want to build enough so that we have enough expansion for growth. So just last week, Judge Hamby and Judge McGee called me to tell me about some interesting legislation that is, I guess, supposedly supposed to go through, and how it will affect and what type of immediate needs are going to be coming our way in terms of judges and courtrooms. So I will open the floor to them.
Well, one thing I want to point out is I want to thank you all for your participation in the courthouse tour about a year, year and a half ago, when we were talking about the expansion needs that we were going to have. And I wanted to point out that the things that have gone on since then have been consistent with that expansion we were talking about. The General Assembly has already allotted us a 5th District Court Judge who is in place and conducting court now. That leaves us five District Court Judges with four District Courtrooms. But we are able to schedule creatively to get more court time in, more cases resolved. But that's really, in the long term, not going to be sufficient for us to schedule. The North Carolina General Assembly just passed at the end of its session, raise the age for juvenile court, which means that juvenile court cases involving 16 and 17-year-olds in criminal cases, which have previously gone straight to adult court. Now, the difference is that in adult court, those are handled rather routinely and do not require a great deal of time, but it also does not give a great deal of resources for 16 and 17-year-olds, and it gives them a criminal record as no other state does for people at that age. So those cases are, many of those criminal cases are going to be in juvenile court now, which are going to take a lot more time and involve a lot more resources in trying to get the juveniles' help and assistance to prevent them from career of crime. It will allow us additional programs, but the expansion of juvenile court requires more juvenile court counselors, more court time for each case, and therefore, more space. Just about a week and a day ago, last week, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, legislation arose almost overnight, which would change the districts for, the district boundaries across the state for our courts. The impact on us wouldn't have changed much as far as our district boundaries, but it would add a Superior Court judgeship to our district. So that would be another expansion. I think this may be the proposed districts. They did not, it passed a committee within 24 hours, pretty much, of it being made public. And it went to the House floor and would have been passed there, except there was an agreement to hold off, to give it a little more study. But it is added on to the September redistricting session that the legislature has already set out, so this is going to be discussed. And since we are at the top of the list for an additional Superior Court Judge in need, almost certainly, anything they do is likely to add a Superior Court judgeship to our district. So we're grateful that you've done as much as you have already to foresee the future. And we're looking at a county that, I want to compare it to this courthouse we're in now. It was opened 42 years ago. It had a third floor that was empty so that we would have expansion space. It's lasted 42 years because, one, we had that expansion space, which we filled in about 1990 to 94. And also, we've been able to utilize that space because the county offices which were in there have all been moved over to this building and other facilities. So we've been very fortunate to be able to use it for 42 years. If we're going to be able to plan for the next 40 years, the population has almost tripled since we opened that courthouse. It looks as though if it triples, almost triples, by the time the next 40 years come around, we could be looking at over 500,000 to 600,000 people here in Cabarrus County. So when we're planning, I think it's important that we try to overplan and perhaps overbuild and leave some unscheduled space. Even when this building was built, I recall that almost this multipurpose room took up, I think, about half of this floor, almost half of it, and it was allowed as space for expansion in the future. So the county has a history of taking that into account, and I think that's going to be important for this facility as well.
I'd just like to thank everyone for allowing us to participate in this process and how responsive you all have been to our needs. As Judge Hamby said, we may well have another Superior Court Judge soon, which would be terrific for us. We would not be able to utilize that space, that individual, to its full potential until we do have more space, and you all are certainly planning to help us with that. We have two Superior Court Rooms that we regularly use. We had a second judge. That doesn't mean that we'd necessarily be able to hold, schedule two sessions at the same time, because in Superior Court, you don't know how long a case will take sometimes. So if you end up having a civil case scheduled in one courtroom and a criminal in another, and that case holds over, we're almost at a crisis trying to figure out where we're going to hold court. And that's a problem that would be nice to have if we had a second Superior Court Judge. And we're not asking that, would not be asking that anything be done to the current building that we have to accommodate that in that space. But we wanted to bring that to your attention, just to let you know that we've been behind the curve in terms of resources from the state. Now they are responding and helping us. They've helped us with the 5th District Court Judge, and hopefully, in the not-too-future, we will have an additional Superior Court Judge. And it's not just the judge that comes along, it's all the support staff that comes with the judge to make that position useful. You need additional DAs and additional clerks and those sorts of things. I understand our clerk just got allotted four clerks. And he said to me that they would find space for them over there, and we will do that, he will do that. And so I'm appreciative for the state for helping us at this point, and for you all for being willing to assist us as we continue to grow.
And those of you who know Bill Bags, our clerk, when they called him up and said, "Do you have space for four people?", he said, "Yes, even if I don't, yes." So we'll work things out. And I appreciate all that you've done up to this point already to prepare for us to move forward. A lot of counties are in as bad a shape or much worse, and they don't have county commissioners looking forward. And I also appreciate that the problems of growth in the court system, you also have growth issues in other areas, in schools and in other programs. So it's not just us, it's everybody, and that's the challenge you face, and I appreciate that.
I'm sure we'll have some additional discussions, but you started out by mentioning the tour that we took a year or so ago, and I would like to thank you for putting that together for all of us. That has been invaluable to me in somewhat understanding the needs as we look at these drawings and these proposals, which I think, had we not done that, I would not have had a clue on most of it. So that has really been very helpful.
Well, and Judge McGee has pointed out, we have certain cases that we don't know how long they're going to last. Over the last couple of years, we've had murder cases that have gone on two or three weeks. We've had civil cases involving malpractice and other things that have gone on extended as well. So we've been able to work with the facilities we have so far, but we are to the point where we're seeing that it's not going to be possible to do that for very much longer without some sort of expansion.
So with that being said, I'm sure that you can all look through the different prints, the preliminary drawings that are on there, and I will gladly talk about any of them. We do have a representative here from Mosley that can discuss those and what went into those. We've had several meetings with courthouse staff and changed different floor designations and layouts. And I guess, really, from my standpoint and Jonathan's standpoint, is we are going to need to come out of this meeting with a little bit of an understanding if we should start discussing with the city a possible variance of the height restrictions. Because we need to either build an extra level for future growth, or build an extra level for all of the judges, and then build in the extra growth below that. But to cannibalize the future growth for a separate judges area, which is pretty much what we're left with, that would eat up any future growth in that building, and it's not a building you'd want to come back and add a floor or two later. If you want to do something, you would want to do it now. So I kind of wanted to at least start to have those conversations. Obviously, with the parking deck going in and hopefully, starting in January, we're already going to be hearing enough in terms of lack of parking for downtown and things like that, which even if they had the courtrooms to hold the cases, they might not have the parking to get the people in for 16 months. So everything is falling in place like it should be, but we need some direction if we should be going to the city and start to discuss that with them in terms of that height restriction.
Just real quick to, part of the new space, remember, we've got the current building that we can do as well. So we've got some different options. Do all of the judges and all of their immediate staff move with them into the new building? Do the DAs and all their staff move, or do they stay back in the old building and create a suite over there? Do we keep probation and parole? Which is, the best case scenario is to keep them there, or do we move them to another location to provide for some of that growth and not need those other floors? So that's what we're trying to figure out now, is where we add on a projected cost? We thought it was going to be in the what range, and now it's going to be quite a bit more.
Chris may be able to address cost better, pull the microphone towards you, too.
Yeah, and I think that the, we developed two different models as part of sort of the end goal of this study. One being, what's the best way to suit the immediate needs, and the other being kind of, what can we do as far as options for future growth? And that future growth option includes a fifth floor. Right now, the main sort of conceptual model that we've developed has four floors of built new construction. And then a fifth floor, that would just be shell space, nothing in it for several years until the need arises, that you would need to fill it out with additional courtrooms. To kind of touch a little bit on the changes at the state level regarding 17-year-olds, that also, from a security standpoint, and moving people from one facility into the holding areas, that presents additional space needs that would kind of need to be accommodated as well. So the first option, I believe we had it 89, we've got it in the study, but, and then I think 96 for the full built-out, including...
Last pages of that attachment.
Yeah. And that includes your furniture, that includes, you know, basically, move-in, everything is there, your systems, all of that.
Just for the board's purposes, this does move all of the judges, all of the DA. It also provides a secure level of parking on the lower level for all of those as well. Now, is that, and judges, I'm not sure, is that just for the judges and the actual DAs, or is that support staff and everything else that's going under there? Because that's a pretty expensive...
Not all support staff. The number of spaces, again, this is just a preliminary design, this is not the full design.
I understand. But if we continue to move forward, it is the design, so that's what we've got to make sure.
Yeah, it would be, there's enough spaces for all of the DA's office and all of the judges, and possibly, some of the support staff. But nothing else was intended for clerk of courts or probation or anything like that.
So I guess, just, if we're going to provide for growth, which makes complete sense, if we're going to max out the building when we move in to have that shell above, the other options are, do we move, do we have space to grow in the old building by moving other agencies out? And I'm not promoting that or advocating for it, and I'm just saying that is one option if we have to come down, if it comes down to money. Best case scenario is they do stay there, because it's a secure environment for them as they bring in their clients as well. But the price tag is going up pretty high, pretty fast on this. And again, we're still in just the preliminary programming right now. So it's, when we start designing, we want to make sure you see all the different options you have. Yes, the seventh floor across the street, it was perfect, we were able to move into that and not have to add more space or build another building for our CCSE program. This space here, we've used it very well. I just want to make sure you understand, because, do you want to go through some of these slides?
Sure, we can.
I think that might be advantageous to go through some of that.
Real quick to back up, so the, what is the height restriction? How many floors is the restriction? So the numbers are looking at the fifth, is that above?
Seventy-two.
Seventy-two feet? Okay.
I wanted to ask you a couple of questions also, too, before we move on, and that is, Kyle, how long are we looking at? What kind of a delay are we looking at if we decide, which in my opinion, we need to build the shell space, in my opinion, on that part? But how much more delay are we looking at to make that application with the city and get the approval and all of that? We looking at a month, two months, six months, a year? And not only, and I'll make it two phases, so that way you can do them both and save some time. As far as the option that you mentioned as an alternative of taking people out to make room there for other people and moving those people out, I don't really want to see us go back to that method again. And that's just my opinion again, simply because we're backing up when we do that. You know, what I mean is, is we build the facility for what we need, plus the shell space for future use, and not pull anybody out and move them somewhere else. Because all that's going to do is just cause us more expense, and eventually, you're going to have to do something with them eventually, the ones that you moved out. And while that's happening, the courthouse is just getting fuller and fuller. So we need to just make sure that we do it right to start with.
That's one thing that we heard time and time again from all of the different groups that we interviewed, is, you know, we would always pose the question, is there a way that, you know, do you need to be physically within the courthouse? Can you be in a different building, whether it's somewhere else in downtown, whether it's remote from downtown? And we heard from everybody, operationally, there is just so much that has to be done in the building itself, that it doesn't make sense to move really any of these departments out in the short term. So this kind of represents, including, keeping everybody in this building, in this facility for as long as possible, new and existing. So in the existing building, part of what we are proposing in the study would be putting some new cladding, some sort of new skin on it to make it of one piece with the new addition, get it to where it kind of blends in more with the overall downtown area. I mean, the building as it stands right now, it's kind of, it's a little brutal, it's a brutalist style, especially when it sits next to the Historic Courthouse. So there's an option there to use the bones of the existing building, but to kind of dress it up and make it like new again.
I don't see a delay in the process. I mean, this is something we could discuss. So at the beginning of the attachment, you see all the space needs that were developed by the architect, and there really hasn't been any question about the space needs. They went through a very detailed process, meeting with each of the groups and working those out. It became kind of, as we went through these floor plans, and this was just a schematic, became more of a circulation issue. So we started looking at how to group offices better or group uses in a different way, because each one has their own security levels and needs and trying to avoid interaction in different places. We had a robust discussion about how we could manage that and still accommodate that in the building, and what ended up is perhaps less of a footprint for this building, so it's not, so where it sits is not as wide, or it's got the same length, but not as wide, but you would go up a floor to handle the circulation issues and still do that. So all that is just something that, to say, that we would start discussions with the city, whether there was, they thought there was some leeway, or whether they'd have any desire to see that height restriction changed. But at the same time, we're just beginning to put out the RFP for an architect and beginning those, going from these schematics to developments. We would have that answered, really, before we ever got them working on a plan. And there may be some options as they continue to look at, and I think that's where we send it back to the architect, is can we, with these four floors, still have these expansion room, and is there another way to do that circulation and still meet all those needs?
So from a height standpoint, what's the height of the Judicial Center and the detention facility?
That's the limit right there.
The limit is actually the Hotel Concord, which is the 72 feet. That's, to give you something at scale, that's a building of that height. And the existing courthouse is 53 feet. So it's 72, you're 19 feet above that.
I guess what I'm trying to picture in my mind is in that, on that site, how it would relate to the adjacent buildings.
That's a concern that we've had from the beginning, is that means you're driving down Church Street, and that this building has the potential to block out a portion of the Judicial Center, the right-hand side of it. You would still see the white facade when you're driving in, but you might not be able to see much after it. Now, if you look at kind of where, how the entrance is proposed, to kind of cut it like that, that's to allow you that view of going down the street and make that intersection our judicial intersection, if you will, with the entrances of both buildings across from each other.
So the existing building there, the Sheriff's Department, does not exceed the 72 feet?
No. No, because we have floors below ground there also.
The housing is built in a very large hole.
Right.
There's two floors below grade. And it also helps us because of the slope going down Corbin, which is also what aids us with the parking deck in terms of how we were able to get the height with the parking deck, because there's such a topography drop.
Right. So we're looking at, without the shell space, some rough estimates, $96 million, including the fixtures and that sort of thing?
And that includes renovations of the current courthouse, exterior and interior.
Which are pretty extensive, based on the drawings.
Yes. I mean, to the best of what's drawn, those are rough numbers to start carrying forward.
There is some shell space built in that, again. It's as we started going through and looking at circulation and possible modification to those plans, that we lost the shell space. So I think the challenge then is back to the architect, can you still include the shell space, but modify the circulation within the building?
In this version, sorry, didn't mean to cut you off. In this version, you know, shell space on a separate floor is great, especially when you're talking about future courtrooms, those have a large footprint, but you also want to pepper more future growth space down into the other floors of the building, because it doesn't make sense if the DA's on one floor, but the growth space is on another floor. You want to keep those functions together. So we tried to also, as we developed the concept, to add in future growth space in other spots, kind of on each floor level.
Mr. Chairman, I want to make sure I'm following you, because you said 96 million without the shell space, and I thought the page I'm looking at says 96 with the shell space. Eighty, 90 million without.
Eighty-nine without.
Okay.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure I'm following.
So the 96 one does include some...
Yes, and that's a five-story version with a basement parking level. So the non-shell space is a four-story version. And the four-story version does not require a modification to the height restrictions, just the five-story version.
Yeah, I see that now, and thank you for pointing that out.
And we did have some lengthy discussions with probation, and there are several counties where the probation officers are not in the courthouse, and obviously, they felt strongly that they wanted to be in the courthouse, and gave us a long list of the things that they provide by being in the courthouse. But they're aware of other counties that have had to move them out because of future growth issues.
But as Commissioner Shu pointed out, if we put them somewhere else, that's another building we got to buy, build, or rent also. And I guess if you tried to, and of course, it's difficult to think 40 years into the future, but where we're... the future, but where, we're pretty limited on dirt in the general vicinity as to other options that might be available, I would think.
The largest parcel in downtown after this is the parking lot number two on Church Street, next to Fifth Third Bank.
Which is not contiguous at all to that.
No. And that, that would represent the last of our big lots like that.
Right.
Since Pam's not here, Mike, maybe you'll have the answer on this. What year would this courthouse go online for debt service?
What's the design, uh, prospective design time?
Year and a half to two, so twenty-one, I think, is what we're scheduling that.
Twenty, twenty-one, F Y twenty-one.
So we're still looking at at least two and a half to three years before it would hit the debt.
That's a year and a half to design, probably as much as building.
Yeah. And, and after you build, then you have to go back and renovate the other one. So it's, this is almost like a Judicial Center Part Two project.
The good news is, we actually have a place to put it that makes sense, you know, it almost creates a, you know, like you said, I think you used the term judicial plaza or whatever. So, you know, if we were stuck and going way down the street somewhere and the jail was way over here, you know, that would be kind of awkward. So, I mean, the, the, it's massively expensive, but if you're looking for direction, I can give you one-fifth of some direction. I say pursue the height, the, the, you know, ask, negotiate or talk to the city of Concord, I, I think we need to build the shell space. If, if, you know, of course, boils down to what we think we can afford, but if, any population study that you currently look at, the I-85 corridor is a driving growth piece that we're sitting right on. So from Charlotte to Raleigh, it's not, I think Judge Hamby said something about triple the space. If we do, if we repeat where we've been, that's not inconceivable. And, and so, there you go.
Thirty years ago, when we were projecting the population of the county, I went over this a little while ago, we projected that if, if we hit every top target and blew off the doors, that by 2015, our county would have a hundred and thirty-five thousand people in it. Well, obviously, it was about a hundred and ninety-five thousand people. And we seem to be following forty years behind Gwinnett County, Georgia, which is now at eight-hundred thousand. And I'm not quite optimistic enough to think we'll be at eight-hundred thousand in forty years, but I think five to six-hundred thousand is entirely reasonable.
Well, that makes me sort of back up a little bit and think about the parking. Kyle, you know, we've had several discussions on the parking deck. And do you remember what the net gain was? Because we got a couple hundred there now.
Yeah, so we're building six-hundred-and-twenty-six and we're displacing, if you count in the Market Street, we're displacing somewhere in the area of a hundred and seventy, a hundred and eighty. And then when you tack on where the courthouse goes, it's another hundred and twenty. So half of, half of the deck is eaten up by the displacement.
So we're actually gaining about three hundred spaces?
That's correct.
But that's between the courthouse and the deck. Is that right? Is that what you're saying? Or is this three hundred, but just for the deck, the net gain for the deck?
No, no, three hundred, once, once you build the new courthouse, we'd be gaining three hundred.
We're actually losing some with the courthouse.
Yes.
That will be displaced to the deck.
Right, right, okay. Yeah, because I forgot about those spots that's there. And, and not all of them, because if we do actually build that basement level with those parking spots, that represents twenty to thirty individuals that work at the courthouse. So you can kind of back off that number a little bit. But yes, that's, when we first brought the deck to you and we, we had the discussion about the four hundred spots, first five hundred spots, first six hundred spots, that was one of the things that came up, that was, those was one of the slides you all saw. Right. Was how much we were going to displace when we built that courthouse.
Yeah, we're, we're losing these spaces. We're losing the spaces that we're going to build the deck on top of.
Right.
And Concord's losing approximately a hundred and fifty?
Yeah, well, thirty plus ninety, I believe, is what they asked for.
Somewhere a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and fifty spaces. And that's why they're participating with us on paying for the deck as well.
And I'm sure I confused you if you've looked at these schematics, they, they have already made the adjustments to the circulation based on our discussions. What I was talking about was, the original plan had some expansion space on the fourth floor, but they've already made the adjustments to that and what you're looking at.
So the only expansion space included in this current plan are the couple of spots that I saw labeled as unassigned?
Mm-hmm.
Well, there's one labeled future growth.
A lot of them would be in the existing building. Once it's renovated, there would be some leftover spaces. There's a couple in the new building as well. So we tried to sort of spread it around as we, we're going through this exercise to get a little bit of it everywhere. So this, what's on the screen now is the fourth floor. And that gray area kind of to the right would be some future growth space, most likely for the DA, which is the purple area there on the right-hand side.
And also, without any future growth space, if anything changes in the state in terms of requiring us to provide office space for public defenders, we would not have anything to address that. Currently now, we're not required to, but that is something that would be subject to change.
And, and that's something that a lot of people say is coming. We now have appointed counsel, we appoint the attorneys, they have their own offices, their own staffs. If we change to a public defender system, public defenders by law are required to have comparable, almost equal space with the district attorney. So if you're looking at that purple space up there, having to duplicate it in the building, there's no place to do that unless we add a, the fifth floor.
So that purple space is the DA's space in the new building?
Yes. And if there were to be a public defender, for obvious reasons, the public defender is, is to have comparable space with the, with the district attorney.
And these plans represent a, a twenty-year space need. And so beyond that, it's, it starts to get difficult to really gauge where the population growth is going to go. So this wouldn't necessarily be all offices filled in on day one if this were to be built. But this is, you know, this does represent a good, long-term usable building before you would have to really start to eat into a lot of the shell space and future growth space. Now, if things change on the state level, if, you know, major decisions come down, that changes staffing, obviously, that's not something that can be fully anticipated, but.
I asked this question to make sure I'm reading this correctly, but I was a little bit surprised at how fully utilized the basement of the existing facility appears. Looks like it's even utilized to a greater extent than it currently is. Some of that vault space is being converted?
Yeah, there's, rather than having one single vault for the, the clerk of courts, this plan kind of spreads it around to enable a little bit more flexible use of space and get more offices. Unfortunately, the issue with offices in the basement is access to natural light is, is obviously not an option. So, you know, that, that has been part of our discussions with, with groups as we've kind of developed this plan. So, you know, this could also, people could change levels, but one thing that we considered in this process was the clerk would need access to those, those spaces. So it made the most sense to put the clerk closest to those, those kind of, the revised vault spaces that we're looking at.
And at this point, we do have multiple vault spaces. What used to be the Register of Deeds office many, many years ago is now civil court. Those files are kept in a vault. And then there are two downstairs vaults, one for special proceedings in estates and one that involves the more general civil files.
A lot of the larger file rooms that are in the plans represent inactive files that the staff is not going to on a daily basis, maybe once a week, they might go access something in those vaults. And so for those, you know, heavily used files, that you would want to have something within the suite that would, a, a file room or, you know, a lot of space for cabinets in each of the offices, depending on how the suite's going to operate.
Am I correct in assuming that, that the amount of inactive file space is less than it may have been in previous years with some of the electronics, record-keeping and that sort of thing, or not?
I wouldn't say it's less, but it's not expanding like it was because of the current archives, plans for, for, they scan all of the documents and then it winds up being, the actual physical files wind up being destroyed on a more rapid basis than they used to be.
We're, we're pretty far behind technology-wise in the state courts. That's something that the Chief Justice's Commission has looked at. And hopefully, going forward, we'll be able to digitize a lot more of the records that we now have stored in, in file folders.
So that might buy us another five years and this one might last forty-five years instead of forty.
Well, that was another thing in this building. There was a huge computer room downstairs because we knew computers were coming. The only thing we didn't anticipate was that the computers were going to be about as big as that television set instead of taking up an entire room. So a lot of that space has been taken for other things in this building.
So that bought us five years on this last plane problem. Okay, other questions or comments?
This, this is all just gathering information too, you know, and that would be, Mike, if we did do this at some point and it turns out ninety-five, ninety-six million dollars, what kind of a yearly debt service payment would we be looking at?
Eight to nine million dollars.
And so to the viewing audience that would want to know, well, how does that affect them? When we generate a penny on the tax rate, I believe that gives us about two-point-one million, somewhere thereabouts. So just for that, you'd be looking at four cents minimum. If, if that would be the case where that the growth and economic development and all those other things that gave us revenue didn't continue to rise enough to cover the costs, that's what we'd be looking at, four to five cents.
Correct.
But we hope though that.
We hope that growth continues to.
We're hoping that the growth continues.
At least a portion of it.
If we get flexibility on some things that we're working on through the state legislation. So if that all comes to pass, then maybe the hit won't be quite as heavy for us on a debt service payment.
The consensus that I think I've heard is that we are interested in exploring the possibility of, of, exploring the additional height. Is that correct? I see heads nodding yes. I, I do feel it would be very short-sighted of us to, to not, you know, it would be kind of like some of the schools that we've built that are at capacity when we open them. We have a little bit more flexibility there than we're going to have on this project, I think.
I hadn't really said anything, that's kind of my feeling from the, we don't have the eighty-nine million, much less than ninety-six million, but for that difference in the seven, knowing that down the road, what's going to, where the growth is probably going to go, seems to me like if we, if we jump in there and do it now, it's going to be better than if we have to deal with it five to ten years down the road. We're probably not going to have money then, but, you know, you guys seem to do really well, working magic, but I know that's going to end sooner or later, but it just, you know, to, to not, when we know the issues that we're facing, the growth we have, to not try to address this now, I think would be a mistake, but we got to be able to pay for it too, so.
And I look to the experts to agree or deny, but it's going to be considerably less expensive to address this expansion issue now than it would be to come back ten years from now and try to then look at solutions.
Yes, even if you're building the, the shell space, there, there's, that, that actual physical shell, the exterior part of the building is, is going to be much more cost-effective to build that now versus, and code's not going to allow you to build a new floor on top of the building later. So if you, if you end up building a four-story building here, that ends up being, being the building that you have to, to work with. And that lit, you're, you've then built out all of your site as well. So then you're looking at maybe tearing down the existing building and building an expansion or something new in its place to accommodate those existing, or those increasing needs rather than building within space that you already have.
Has there ever been any conversations with the city of Concord on the height restrictions for anything else that anybody's aware of or anything?
Yeah, we had some on the jail across the street.
Okay.
Some discussions there, but we never, we didn't see this.
Didn't need it.
We had talked about that potential on the parking deck, but it didn't exceed it either, right?
That's correct. And the city of Concord was involved pretty closely with us on that parking deck.
Right.
I just have one last comment, Mr. Chairman, and that is in reference to the, the shell space. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the high school, the new high school that is in the planning, it includes shell space as well for growth.
Yes.
You know, so, you know, we're, we're definitely forward-thinking, visionary people when we think about the future there on what our needs are going to be, because we know it's not going to stay the same. I feel sure it's not going to stay the same. And I don't believe it's going to go the other way. So I'm sure it's going to be very positive growth.
Well, I certainly agree with you, and we're in a, an excellent position to applaud those that came before us, that made those decisions on this building and others to allow for that expansion, because had they not done that, we would be in a very awkward position trying to deal with those issues today that we're not. And so, Mr. Billford, does that give you the information you needed?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Very well, then we will move on to three point three, which we have already discussed in this conversation a great deal, but that's an update on the parking deck.
Just a very brief update. We have met with all of the groups at the city of Concord now, so fire, electrical, stormwater, water, and gone through the plans with them. We've received comments, questions, concerns, and we've addressed all of them. And I believe we're all on the same page in terms of moving forward with the design. There was a couple of questions mainly from the fireside, some things that had to be recalculated for stand pipes, which is how you would fight a fire in that building that we needed to send through. And there was also some animated discussion about the existing transformers that sit on the property, neither of which do anything for us. Actually, one used to feed Lou Finell's property, which we've since bought and can be demoed, but the other one feeds all of the retail spots on, on Union Street. So two gals in those type of places, and there will need to be a relocation of that. So we're going to have a separate meeting with the city of Concord Electric to work on that so we can minimize interruption of their service. And both staff feels confident that we can go ahead and make that as minimized as possible. Really, the, the, the one thing that we're looking for from staff, staff standpoint is to move forward and start talking to the owner of those buildings and the different, the different people that are actually leasing them, to start talking to them about this project because it is going to affect their day-to-day business in terms of their access to the alley that runs behind that. They actually use a portion of our property now, and part of it belongs to the building. But during some of this construction, some of that is going to be impeded. So we do want to get permission to start talking to them about the effects of it and sit down and meet with them. We have had the public Q and A. None of those folks showed up, but I've received a lot of calls from them. And the calls range from, how long is this going to take? How noisy is it going to be? To, are you going to charge me for parking once, once it's built? So those are the type of questions. And I, I will say to the board that at some point in the near future, I believe Mr. Marshall and I will come to you to start getting some input in terms of restitution or paying for parking. Because in terms of us to move forward with the design of it and what types of conduit sleeves or devices or parking arms or things that we put in there, I need to kind of get an idea of what you all envision. If paying for parking is going to be an option, if we're going to pay during the day or during the weekends or at nights. or during the weekends or at nights, or just Kyle build it so that we can come back and do something in the future. But I, I will need you all to start thinking about that so I can get some input. Because that's gonna design the final, that's gonna drive the final design.
I would imagine that some of the underutilized second-floor space, I'm not sure if it's two floors or three floors on the existing retail is probably going to become much more attractive with the construction of this parking deck and the improvements. So hopefully they would be pleased about that, the property owners there. Yes, sir?
I just have a question, you know, and like I say, it's all trying to gather information and that is on the, all the preliminary planning that you're doing. And obviously I feel like that parking fees of some sort will be how they pay for, how we'll pay for the deck. I'm thinking, but how that will be distributed out, I don't know all those details. But a lot of the parking decks, the newer parking decks these days, like, well, the airport and Duke and other places that I go, they, you don't have a teller setting there to collect this. This will be all automated. You get a ticket when you go in, you put the ticket in the machine and you pay for it and you drive out. And I'm hoping that that's all being considered whenever we're doing this.
We'll be looking at both ways. A lot of that is affected by cost. I know exactly what you're talking about and that's very much something we would like to do. We do not want to have a parking attendant.
That's all, that's all.
We did a pretty lengthy tour of Raleigh's, all the municipal decks and I, I walked away knowing that not only do they have a separate division that does nothing but manages these things, they actually contract somebody on top of that. And I, and I sat there listening to what they had and what they have to do and they're walking around making sure people aren't parking in spots they're not supposed to. And I was like, ooh, it could be, it can become as burdensome as you want it. So yes, that's our intent, but that technology comes at a cost. But my plan is to put all the conduit in so that if we have to go to that at a certain point, because as this county grows, this might be a conversation we're having in the future and I want to make sure those things are in place. And I do, I have teed up Todd Shanley with I T S that, he's done some research, so we know whether to move forward or not. I just need to, at some point, know if that's an immediate, when we build it, that's what we want or not.
I would highly recommend, and that's our intention, is to put those conduits in at the very least. Because if you don't move to charge originally, you will in the future. And just for information, the county employees pay to park in this building. So we're the only ones that do pay downtown, so just.
Well, the thing of it is, you know, if you think about having attendants, well, you're gonna have to have somewhere to put the attendant, which requires a structure in the parking deck and it may require more than one attendant. I don't know. None of those studies have, I haven't seen anything, but and then you've got, one person can't work all the time, so if you've got, you may have to have two. And if you've got two exits, then that would be possibly four or five. So you're, you're creating a, really another department, really. And so you would save money in the long run and on the annual, no doubt, you know, immediately by planning to have it automated from the beginning. That's what my thoughts were.
That's our intention, to have it in, have all the conduit in place and then automate it as much as possible. I don't think, you know, we've talked about different options, but I don't think we want to create our own department for parking. We could contract that out. There's a lot of businesses out there that do that, that we could contract with. But we still have to have all of the infrastructure in place for them to do it as well.
So if you say contracted out, that means they would get a fee?
Right.
They would get a fee of it? Okay, I'm with you now.
And, and a lot of that works to the, the degree, we've heard a lot of talk and possibly for future downtown growth, whether it be residential or retail, about having reserved spots and blocked-off spots. So if you could imagine driving in a deck and, and one bay would be, have its own lift arm gate and you wouldn't be able to get into it. The problem is with our deck, you can't really do that unless you, you have pass-through cards because you can't get to the next deck. And I can't put everybody up top because during, you can't put all the reserve spaces up there because I can't clear during inclement weather. That, that top deck will literally be chained down during inclement weather. We won't put a Bobcat up there and I won't try to get a Plow up there to do anything. So that's part of the, now that we're kind of past the initial design and structure and how can we build it, those are the kind of nuances that I'll be bringing to the board over the next few months that we have to have discussions on. And that's a bulk of what the public interaction we've had was, was based around. And we told them that we did not have guidance on that yet. But I can tell you, if you opened it up without any type of payment, you'd have every courthouse employee parking there on day one. I'm not sure you'd have room for anybody else after that. It's just the reality. The only other thing to report on that is we've moved forward with a Phase Two environmental. The Phase One environmental reports showed some gaps in historical U S T reporting, which is not unheard of with the age of that site. Unfortunately, the Phase Two site, uh, Phase Two did bring up one hot or field contaminated sample. So it's, it's only, hasn't been, the results have not come back from the lab yet, but we did have one hot or contaminated sample from field analyzation for petrolyms. And we've also discovered an anomaly in the ground that we don't know what it is. It does not appear to be a tank. We're leaning towards probably a very large chunk of concrete. But those are the two things that have come up and we're going to have to deal with those during the actual construction.
And then, of course, there's contingency built in for things like that, hopefully.
There is contingency. I will tell you that where that hot sample was found is very much near Spring Street and I feel confident that somehow that contamination might not just, might be going into the street a little bit. So we're, we're kind of waiting for a final report to come through.
Has there been any additional discussion or interest in the space along the side that may be of interest to private developers for commercial and residential?
So this is a perfect view for that. The, the space here, this is the bar brick, the view looking down bar brick, kind of towards Memorial Gardens. You can see the unfinished side to the deck. That's intended to be where the, where the trees are there. Ultimately, that's intended to be retail at the first level and residential above, but privately built. So Mr. Downs and I have met with, with one party that's interested in that and looks at specifically at downtown sites and, and very specifically at sites about this size and the number of units that could be built there. The City of Concord has also had some discussions with, with a couple of groups that they've sent, are sending our way to, to look at it. So there is some interest in that.
If I understood correctly, it would perhaps not be desirable for those projects to happen simultaneously because of logistics and lay-down space and so forth? Or am I wrong on that?
I think we're gonna have some difficulty with, with material storage for this, even though we are looking at a cast-in-place, but there is a lot of material that to be stored. So it would help though, because at this side, where you see the openings there, those either need to be, the openings would either need to be filled or a separate wall built up against them to have the proper fire separation. So some of those things we would be able to work together on. But yeah, I think it would be better if the retail residential followed the deck instead of being built at the same time.
Well, I applaud the design that, or what we see in the picture here, that, that looks inviting. The stairway is open. Was recently in the other parking deck downtown and the, the stairs that get you through to Union Street are closed with no windows and it's kind of ominous to go into. It doesn't really invite public interaction, I don't think, and this does.
That was really very intentional to make this, so people would feel more safe and secure by being open. The city has had some comments to, provided some comments about the casings for those maybe being a little darker because there, where there is aluminum or metal casings downtown, they tend to be a darker color. They've also, Kyle, they, they leave me out of color discussions and I'm colorblind, but they've talked about the color of the brick matching different bricks downtown. And of course, we have accent in there that would match the Lutheran church also. Those are all key things around it that we wanted to, it's such a large structure. We want to break that up with color and then tie in with the surrounding uses.
And I've already been down there with the different facade samples and we, we did go to the church and literally matched up. And then part of the courthouse we matched up with and then we tried to match up with that retail right on Union Street that I, I'm looking to speak with. A lot of that brick is actually painted. So as long as they don't give it a different paint job, that's kind of what we're, what we're going with.
Okay, additional parking deck questions? All right, thank you. Moving on to item three-point-four, solid waste collection and disposal franchise agreement. Curious to know how many of you memorized all four hundred pages of that? We're happy to have Kevin Grant with us.
Good afternoon and I apologize for swapping you with hundreds of pages of documents there. I think when we came in front of you a couple of months ago, we did explain to you that the current franchise solid waste collection and disposal agreement expires December thirty-first of this year. So because of that, we went out and put, and issued an informal RFP. We sent it out to five residential waste haulers. We picked all the current waste haulers that currently serve the various municipalities within Guevara County as well as those who have expressed interest to us in the past. Of that, we received two bids, which you can see up on the screen right now. We received a bid from Republic Services, who we have a current agreement with, and for Waste Pro. As you could see, they were fairly close in terms of numbers. The important one in terms of the way I look at it is gonna be that first one, which is the residential trash, bulky waste and recycling collection and disposal. Current charges for unincorporated residents is seventeen fifty-eight a month. Republic Services came in with a bid of eighteen oh five. Waste Pro's eighteen ninety-nine. And then we also, we have a couple of other things because within our current franchise agreement, it also includes disposal options as part of our inter-local agreement that we have with the municipalities for everyone except for the City of Concord. So we put that out the bid as well and you can kind of see what the numbers are there. They're very close. The only difference is that Waste Pro is offering to haul it to or to provide space at the Union County landfill, which could pose some problems in terms of logistics and hauling it and adding potential fuel and labor costs. The other item that we, that we had to bid out for was for residential waste that we receive at our construction and demolition landfill. Just ran the numbers for the just completed fiscal year two thousand seventeen. We received twelve thousand customers over the past fiscal year who came to us to drop off residential waste. So it is a very popular option. We receive about twenty-five hundred tons of residential waste. The one thing that's a little alarming on this cost proposal, the numbers are exactly the same. However, if you've noticed that our current cost is zero. Republic is offering that we could take it to their landfill for thirty-seven dollars a ton and Waste Pro would provide us to go to the Union County landfill at thirty-six dollars a ton. Both of them would add significant costs to us in terms of receiving residential waste at our landfill. If we go with the current Republic Services bid, that would add roughly ninety-five thousand dollars in disposal cost. We could recoup that with adjusting the fee schedule that we currently charge folks for coming to us for dropping off trash. We could possibly use recycling revenue that we're currently receiving. I would still like to go to either company and see if we can get that number down as we start to hammer out an agreement. I'm hoping that we can do that. But it's, it is kind of a precursor for what we're gonna see down the road as the Speedway landfill starts to run out of space. I've, numbers, they're, they're showing in their, in their bid package, they're showing about fourteen years of airspace. I've heard other folks over there say it could be a little more. But regardless, it's, it's right in front of us in terms of that facility filling up fairly soon, which means we're gonna have to look for alternative places to take our waste. And I think what we're also starting to see from this bid is Republic is starting to get a little selective in terms of what they're allowing to come to their landfill as they're trying to preserve space going forward. I don't know that for sure. They haven't told me that, but that's kind of what I'm guessing when, when I see these numbers. Also, as I just noticed on the, the Waste Pro bid, they would charge us a roll-off, a monthly charge for roll-off container rentals. We currently rent seven roll-offs through Republic and they do not charge us. Waste Pro would charge us five hundred and sixty dollars a month for seven, which would be about sixty-seven hundred dollars a year. The other option, or the other thing that we're looking for is, is collecting recyclables at the various county facilities. Republic offered to do that for no charge. Waste Pro's offering to do it for eleven hundred dollars a month, roughly. We currently have county staff go around and collect that at this time, but I just want to see that option as, as we get busier trying to privatize some of the stuff that we currently do and have our folks available for manning our recycling convenience centers. So these are, these are the, the numbers right now. Our recommendation right now is to proceed with Republic Services to work on a final agreement that we can present to you hopefully next month, no later than September. We would have to put together an ordinance along with the agreement and then have consecutive readings for your approval. So that's basically what we received so far. Is there any questions or is there any information that, that you all might need?
What would be the term of the new contract if we negotiate?
It's gonna be a five-year term with two potential five-year options. And if we did that, excuse me?
Yeah, or whatever they would prefer.
Or whatever, yes. Yes.
That's how the current agreement that's expiring was set up. So I want to make sure that everybody understands Republic is obviously cheaper moving forward. That's why staff is recommending them, but that impact to the operating budget of the residential waste roll-off containers at the C and D landfill, that's not something that's been recognized in next year's budget. We have spoken with Kristen Jones about that. And the agreement, the current agreement does not run out till January. So Kevin made mention of a ninety to ninety-five thousand dollar operating hit. It would be half of that. So that is something that we've talked to her about that might be coming. And obviously Kevin is gonna work in terms of reaching out to Republic. If, if you all tell us to proceed in that, in that way, we're obviously going to try to have a very lengthy discussion about that. But that is one of the precursors that, that is just coming with our market and our population and the, and the loss of airspace at that landfill.
Yeah, most likely, we're gonna, like, like Kyle said, we're gonna try to get that number down. But we will probably recommend that we have a fee that would make that revenue neutral or neutral there. I don't think we would want to absorb that additional cost.
Right. The, the fees that we currently charge residents does cover the cost of us hauling the roll-off containers to the Speedway, so it's covering the cost of fuel, it's covering the cost of labor, it's covering the cost of maintenance for those vehicles. So yeah, we would have to adjust it accordingly. The other thing I just noticed that I forgot to mention is we were also asked for the haulers to give us an option of yard waste collection, which we currently don't offer. It would be the option that both presented. In fact, the way we asked for it was to put it into a ninety-six gallon car because that's the way a lot of these waste haulers are starting to go to because it's a very labor-intensive, costly process of going, you know, door-to-door, collecting yard waste. But it's, it's something that I do get phone calls on a regular basis. In fact, I just got one this afternoon from an unincorporated resident asking if we provided that service, which we don't do. The, the price though, that they offered from both companies, in my opinion, was a little high and it would be something I want to ask them if that would be on a per call need. So would they charge five eighty-five as needed? The way they're telling me right now is it's gonna be five eighty-five additional on their, on their monthly bill. So they would incur an extra about sixty-five dollar cost per year for the yard waste option. which if you're using it on a frequent basis, probably is not a bad price if you're using it occasionally. When you're dealing with unincorporated residents, it's kind of like a 50-50 mix. You know, those who have enough land where they can dispose of it their own way versus those who truly don't have an option to get rid of it. So if nothing else, we would leave that option in the agreement for up to you all to authorize us to have that. We don't necessarily have to execute that, say, year one. We could put it in there saying if we think year one or year five is the time to go ahead with that, then we want to go ahead and do it. So that's just an option we want to leave out there, but I was really curious to see what kind of numbers we could get from these folks.
So would that be something that would be optional to individual residents? If they chose to have that service or not?
That's kind of what I want to push. I'd like to see it almost like a bulky waste collection where there is no, it's part of your normal trash collection, but you contact the company and say, "I'm going to have some yard waste at my curb next week, so put it on the schedule, please." We're still in works. The way they're presenting it to me is it'd be 5.85 or 6.91 per month, regardless of you put something on the curb once a month or not. So I'm working with them to see as we go forward how we could change that and make it optional.
Right. So the people that bring the residential trash to the landfill, what's their motivation for doing that? Is it less expensive than paying for the regular pickup or?
It's a multiple reasons for it. Some could be you've exceeded what you can put in your current trash cart for a collection and you want to get rid of it. A lot of folks don't subscribe with currently with Republic Services. They feel it is too costly. It's easier for them, based on convenience to our CND landfill, to bring it to them. Another one is they might have some bulky waste that they just want to get rid of, that they don't want to wait till next week for them to pick up, say they've got a couch or just miscellaneous things. So those are the three big reasons why folks come to us.
I guess I was thinking that from a fairness standpoint, to those residents that are paying that monthly fee, if we don't have the fee set high enough at the landfill and we're actually, the people that are paying are subsidizing the people that aren't. Is that inaccurate?
In terms of, are you saying for the folks who are subscribing, if we go with Republic Services?
Right.
Well, they're just paying Republic Services for the convenience of just picking it up at their doorstep so you don't have to put it in your car, your truck, whatever.
Right.
Drive it to the CND landfill. For some folks, it's fairly close. For other folks, it's going to be a little bit of a drive. So no, you're not subsidizing it. The fee that we charge residents to bring trash to our facility is primarily just to offset the cost. I mean, we're not making any money. It's covering the cost for us to, like I said, for the labor to haul it to the Speedway landfill, for the fuel for the trucks and maintaining the trucks.
But if we are required, or if it's in order to break even, we raise that fee, that may encourage more or may, the numbers may not quite work out like they do now. It may incentivize more people to go that way.
Most likely, I ran some quick numbers. I mean, it's still going to be cheaper if you brought your trash to us versus if you subscribe with them. But you're also paying extra for the convenience of having it at your doorstep.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move on to item 3.5, discussion on deterred tax fund, deferred tax fund. And Jonathan will lead that.
So this is, I'm going to start with a little background in history. This, we had set up, or the commissioners had set up, a fund in 2009 and I know only one of the current board was in place at that time because Commissioner Poole actually made the motion for this. It created a special fund that is properties left the present use value program. They are responsible for their current year taxes plus three years back taxes, that difference between the present use value and the market value. And they've got to pay taxes on that difference going in the rear. So we get a payment when they leave that program. The idea was that with property leaving the farming or pasture land or timberland program, that there's a loss to the county in that part of our economy. Now to support efforts towards preserving that part of our economy and that part of the county, we, the commissioners have decided to set those funds aside so that we could support the local food economy as well as purchase conservation easements to have open land that then we could gain back into that preserved state. Since that was enacted in 2009, we have collected fairly substantial funds. It has been used to support Lomax Farm and some of the projects there. It's been used to support the Cruz Slaughterhouse facility in part when that was originally expanded. It's also been used to support efforts to buy conservation easements or matching grants for conservation easements. And funding has gone directly to soil and water for those purposes. So it has been used for that, but at this point, we have built up a balance that last we checked a couple of months ago is about 1.8 million. I suspect it's probably closer to 1.9 million. So bringing it back forward to you because it had a fairly defined use. It was purchase of conservation, or to support the local food economy and the purchase of conservation easements utilizing the payment of deferred taxes. There are some areas that it is possible that we would recommend funding from these, from this deferred tax fund that it come from there to support. For instance, in the current budget, when we went through the CIP, obviously we had a you saw at your workshop and do your work sessions. There were some things that we had proposed to fund that ended up getting pushed further out. One of those was with Lomax Farm, there was $60,000 to look at a study of how to increase and improve the infrastructure supporting that property. Water, sewer, the access road, parking, lighting, and electrical, among other things. But we had pushed that back, but that is something that because it supports the local food economy and that incubator farm, might be something you would consider funding through this. In addition, we have had other, we have other opportunities to purchase some land, whether that be parkland, but not active parkland, rather same sort of thing as the conservation easement. Some of those options have come forward and it may be possible, or you may want to consider use of these funds for that purpose. And we continue through soil and water to identify other areas where they find conservation easements that we maybe will pursue and pursue matching funds so that use of monies from this would then be increased by getting other grants. So really I'm bringing it forth to get some feedback from you on some other ways you might like to, both other ways you feel it may be appropriate to use these funds. But in addition to that, and I've included this policy brief, thank you to Aaron Newton, who provided this to me, community food strategies that actually use this as a case study. And in that policy brief, one of the things they suggest is that there may be some methods where another group, in our case, probably someone like the Agricultural Advisory Board, could look at applications for use of these funds or make recommendations for the use of the funds, but ultimately they would come on to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. And wanted to see if you had any interest in us setting up some kind of a little more formal process to bring forward options and projects that you may wish to use these funds for.
Okay, questions or comments, commissioners?
I think it's an excellent idea, Jonathan, to set up, you know, someone to oversee these fees because it looks like as development continues to grow, the present use value land, that fund is going to increase. And, you know, I think that if we had somebody that could help us oversee that, it would be good. And then we would have the final approval.
Sort of like the active living in parks when they have their matching grant incentive. You know, they narrow it down and bring it to that board and that board approves it, then they bring it to us. Something similar to that.
Right. Well, I would tend to agree with that as well. And I'm assuming that if there were other conservation easements in some of those projects, that would also go to this committee so they could look at the full scope of options available for these funds. Is that the thinking or?
And frankly, there could be, there could be multiple sources that could recommend projects to you because at this point, the Soil and Water Conservation District is acting in that exact role. They are reviewing these conservation easements that have come forward to you, the farmland preservation easements. They're making the recommendation to approve and then it's coming forward to you for use of these funds for those projects. So maybe the Agricultural Advisory Board would be one source, but the Soil and Water Conservation District would remain another source.
Right.
I would add to that the Parks or the Alps Board as well. I think that this, that I think, I would recommend that you look at expanding the uses of this because you do have some passive parkland out there that's, we've been offered from some of those conservation groups that for whatever reason, we're not doing it. And I think it would be good to consider some of those parcels that you're still conserving the open space, but you're not restricting yourself, which you could probably still do it even in this definition, but to make it easier for you guys to consider, maybe expand that definition or that policy up.
So as an example of that, Mr. Downs and I discussed that there's some property we've been looking at in the western part of the county that Clean Water Trust Fund is, has some interest in participating with us and with the municipalities. So maybe that we could use funds and then increase those with Clean Water Trust Fund money. They do put in place conservation easements and restrictions on the use of the property. So it is very much in keeping with this, but it would be something that our Alps Commission may look at that project and say, because it includes those funds and the conservation easement, we're recommending that the county share come from this source.
Commissioner Poole.
So I think we should, you should go ahead and set that in motion and set up a committee and determine who should be on there and that would be a normal appointment for this board to. We appoint a lot of people every month, so it'd be another group to work on to appoint. And I would also say that we should go ahead and fund the $60,000 for the study for Lomax in this year. And I don't know if you can add it to consent agenda for two weeks to do that? I would suggest that that would be the case, that we would add, put that on the consent agenda. That's an item that had previously been discussed but unfunded. So if you've got money sitting there that can fund it, I think we should go ahead and fund it because there could come out of that some other uses for that fund, these funds also.
So just for clarification, are you looking at this new committee just for this purpose? To recommend use of the fund going in the future or to set up a process by which we would use it?
You said to set up a process, but then you've mentioned the parks. I mean, if you've got recommendations coming from parks and you've got recommendations coming from soil and water and you've got wherever else, then I think there has to be some coordination on how that's going to come to us because who gets, I mean, how do you, how do you put a value on one project versus another project? Or is it the first one, you know, to come up with a suggestion of how to spend money and that kind of stuff? So that's your process that you're talking about. And then depending on what comes from that, it could be that representatives of those groups, I mean, that there would be a group that would truly look at all the different areas to truly make a recommendation. I don't know exactly how you plan on doing that, but.
It could, yeah, it could be an independent board to take those recommendations from those other three boards or a committee or whatever.
Because you have different, you have, I won't say conflicting objectives, but there could be some conflicting objectives in there and then, you know, so however you want to. I'm completely open to how your recommendation on setting it up.
Okay.
But also, since you mentioned the study at Lomax and that we had pushed it out and not funded it, then I think that definitely falls under this category for something that could be funded. And I would, since we're just now in a new budget year, let's go ahead and sometime in this budget, go ahead and move the money so that we can, or appropriate the funds for that study and go ahead and get it done this year so that we'll have some time while there's still money in there. If there was something that came out of that that we needed to do, we have some funds available to do something.
Would you like us to come back and sort of give you a brief update of what that original plan was supposed to be? Because it's been a while since we've talked about it before. In fact, I guess it may not, everybody has actually heard that presentation, so.
Yeah, I think that would, we would bring that forward and there is a master plan, of course, that was presented to you, but we've talked with the property owner who owns the acre and kind of in the middle of that and it seems like we may need to plan around that property. So I think there's some modification that would be good to bring back to the board.
So in my hearing, that maybe as opposed to adding that to our consent agenda, that maybe that would be something, we'd come back next month?
Yeah, I think that would probably be more, probably we can bring it to you in August.
Right. And then also bring back a recommendation on how to set up this. I guess if we set up a separate committee, then they would be receiving input from these two or three different groups and bringing one recommendation to us, or we could be the ones receiving the input from the several different committees and making that decision. I kind of like the idea of a separate group. I think that's what Commissioner Poole was saying as well, to sort of mediate that and put that together and bring a final recommendation back to us. Does that sound agreeable to all? Okay, anything else on that topic?
Thank you very much.
Just wanted to make a mention real quickly. There was an article in the Independent Tribune. I think Jonathan made mention, you've seen it, and I know Aaron said he's seen it. And the statistics that I was trying to think of a while ago and couldn't think of where I got them, what was in the paper or whether it was this part here that I read on the policy brief. And it just, for people that's listening, watching this, and for those of you that didn't read it or hadn't read it, just to let you know about, just for an example, with the Lomax Farm, they were mentioned in that article in the Tribune. And then this here says that North Carolina ranks 10th in the United States in the number of farms selling locally, foods locally, and ranks 11th in total direct farm sales. In 2015, 5,249 North Carolina farms reported direct farm sales of food and value-added products and brought in a combined total of more than $187 million. So farming, you know, is not out. It's just less people doing it, but it's definitely in. And whatever we do at the incubator farm to support that, we ought to. And just like Commissioner Poole, you know, I'm in total agreeance that we need to go ahead and fund that, move on, get our committee set up so we can start using those funds to fund projects that come up. And the Alps program that, Londa Strong, you know, is the director there, of course, and they got a good procedure set up, how, when they got people applying for matching grants. It goes to filters, all type thing. I think Byron, you was on, done a lot of that. And so you got some good input there from those two folks to help you set that up.
Okay, very good. If there's no more discussion on that item, we'll move to 4.1. These would be discussion items for action at our July 17th meeting. And 4.1 is funding requests for the first phase of Harrisburg area new elementary school. We're happy to have Tim Louder with us.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to be here. As you know, this is our next school on the tenure plan. I think we're nearing a conclusion on purchase of property. I believe we are. So I think that's getting very, very close. At this point in time, then we need to engage an architect to begin to design based on that piece of property and hopefully get this thing under construction and come back to you in January for the funding of the actual construction of the project. So right now, what we're asking for is one, the land acquisition, and one million, 157,750, the administration fees and stuff associated with that and some legal things that were necessary to get all the contracts in order. Architects fees of 985,000 and engineers of 153,750.
Okay, questions for Mr. Louder? And I think these are items that are already included in our budget for next year.
Yes, sir. I think this has been online for quite a while and it's just pretty much in line with everything we've had.
So the attached, attached budget amendment puts them into these categories?
Right. Okay, any other questions?
Tim, what's the projection for the opening date of this school?
2019.
2019, this one, the new, the new elementary we're talking about?
That's, that's the schedule we're supposed to be on, so it's going to be tight.
So we're looking at construction early next year, then?
We hope to have, bring a construction contract to you in January, be funded through your next finance cycle.
Yeah, okay, so the construction starts hopefully in 2018, opening 2019.
Gives us about 18 months worth of construction before school opens.
We looking at 1,000 kids, 1,200?
Nine forty.
Nine forty. That's core.
That's total.
Total.
Our high schools, I mean, the other schools getting over 1,000, it gets kind of tough. We try to make up for nine forty straight up.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you very much, moving on to 4.2, active living in parks. And we'll talk about the matching incentive grants that we just mentioned.
Thank you for those comments, Commissioners Hugh. We, we do like this program. We've just had a little difficulty in the last few years in Phase One, getting our funds. We, we changed several years ago, as some of you may remember, to go along with what the schools had requested to do the funding cycle at a different time. And that's what we did, moved it back to May and June instead of where we'd had it in October before. Had Phase Two for October, so if we didn't give all of the funds away, then we can have Phase Two after school started. I don't know that changing it has been an issue. I think more, the, the things that I have heard, Byron may have heard some additional things, or these PTOs are spending their money on buying school supplies and more things for the school instead of maybe the frills, the, the lights for the ball fields, the building new ball fields and things like that, trails. We do have a lot of that, but it's smaller projects. So with that said, we, we did not have but two in our first phase to request funds. Byron talked to quite a few more, but the money was an issue. And I'll let him go on and tell you about the program.
Sure. And as most of you, I'm sure, are very familiar with the program, is providing seed money for recreational activities and those that are eligible for these funds are nonprofit organizations or your athletic associations, things, things of that nature. And so the two pro, the two that have applied are ATL and Elementary PTO. Their project is, they are calling it Learning, Learning Without Walls. So they are proposing a, a concrete pad structure with a, a shade structure over top to provide learning abilities to have a large place for classrooms to gather outside and to utilize their facilities outdoors. And then Weddington Hills Elementary is, their title is Trees and Bees, expanding their already massive walking trail system that they have. If you've never seen that, that project, over the last five or six years, you're just seeing her expand. Me personally, of what Lenora Baron has been able to do on that project is amazing. She has just expanded that project over and over of whether it be just expanding the pollinator side and planting more trees, planting more different varieties throughout, or educational signage, just really expanding her program of how to get kids out of the classroom but still learning and volunteering to actually pull weeds or build or come back and be a part of those programs. So fortunately, we have two, we, we have two here, but we just, unfortunately, we don't have more applicants as we've had in the past or are normally competing for these funds as we've seen in the past. And I really do believe Londa hit the nail on the head of what, more than anything, they're requesting funding from the PTOs to provide for more indoor versus recreational opportunities from the PTOs. And they are holding on to that money for those type of opportunities.
I will talk with most likely Mr. Kirk at the school system and see if there's a principal's meeting coming up sometime soon that we can get in front of and let everybody know the deadline in October and what we will and will not fund. So hopefully October will be requests for the rest of the funds.
And leaves us with a pretty significant remaining balance. Now, this is the same fund that some of the civic organizations?
Yes, the Rotary Club, the dog park, and the disc golf.
Right, right. So that, that has, has resulted in some additions and improvements to our county facilities?
Yes.
Park facilities as well?
501(c)(3) organizations are the ones that are eligible to apply. And it is on any county-owned property, school-owned property, or municipal property, or leased to one of those three entities for 25 years to be eligible. So it's not just the schools and it's not just the athletic organizations. Just over the years, typically, those are the ones that have requested the majority of the funds.
Okay.
And when you see that priority rating similar to what they were referencing in the last two conversations ago, there, there are ratings listed as highest, moderate, and lowest. And that's how we put them up for funding. And, and it helps because some, we used to have $200,000 worth of requests for $50,000. And so trying to figure out who was getting what. So we had to come up with a rating system that reflected the needs of the county, and that's where that came from.
Okay, other questions for Byron and Londa? All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is 4.3, authorization to purchase ambulances. And we are glad to have those folks here to talk about that.
All righty. Sam, my name's Jimmy Lance, Assistant Director of EMS. I'm joined by Captain Jonathan Malden. We kind of oversee our fleet services within the EMS organization. We come to you tonight to request for the purchase order of four ambulances. These will be purchased under the SAVIC Buyers Group, which was formerly known as the North Central EMS Cooperative, and which we've done for the last several years, we've purchased from these cooperatives, which contributes to a cost savings of the county of avoiding the bidding process. These cooperatives guarantee fair and equitable low pricing, and it avoids the bidding process. One thing that makes tonight a little bit unique, we're increasing our number from three ambulances, which we've done the last few years, to four ambulances. In FYI 12 and FYI 13, back in those ranges, we were approached later in the budget year with some funding that was available to where we went back after the initial purchase, purchase of ambulances and bought some more. One year, we bought six trucks within a single budget year, which was fantastic. It got us out of a mileage crisis during those budget years. Unfortunately, we're in a position now that we have to replace those trucks, they're starting to mileage out again. So we've crunched numbers and looked at numbers, and we feel like increasing from three vehicles a year to four vehicles will absorb this over the next few years instead of being a substantial impact. With that, we went out for pricing. Diesels are no longer available in ambulance cutaway chassis from General Motors, from Ford. There are a couple of options with Mercedes or whatever, but it would require some significant changes to the type of box that we run, the modular that we run, be much smaller. And we just don't see it to be a workable option for our operation. So this pricing we're bringing to you tonight is for gas vehicles. The difference in the fuel pricing of diesel versus gas against the mileage the vehicles will actually get, because diesels get a little bit better gas mileage and gas is a little bit cheaper. So all that comes out as basically a wash after looking at numbers as far as any significant change in what it's going to cost to operate these. The preventative maintenance and all on a 7,000-mile basis will be somewhat cheaper to service the gas engines. After we started compiling these figures and getting this data, we realized a few things late in the game. And the number I'm going to present to you is somewhat different than, it's $12,000 difference than the total you're showing on your documentation of $607,112. This is related to, after the pricing come in, we realized gas units are cheaper, which we knew coming into it, and there is a $4,500 per-vehicle allowance right now from General Motors that's just a special they're offering. In last fiscal year's budget, we budgeted and followed through with a third-party company coming in and servicing our, our stretchers and our stair chairs, our actual patient moving equipment. We had a third-party come in. And some of our stair, stair chairs were found to be toward the end of their life. So the change from the 607 I quoted to the 619,612 is to accommodate with the funding saved by the General Motors incentive, we were able to equip these four vehicles with stair chairs. So we come to you tonight with the presentation to purchase the four vehicles at a cost of $619,512. With that increase, it deal, it does still fall under the budgeted amount of $648,500 that we had in this current fiscal year budget. So we're still operating within the funds we had planned.
I was going to ask how many years an ambulance would, or your vehicle would last? But I believe from what you're indicating, maybe it's more mileage than years?
And it's a unique parameters or unique calculation we come up to do that. And we definitely go off the odometer readings, which are the actual miles the wheels are turning. And then General Motors and Ford, and truthfully, all the manufacturers, but General Motors and Ford are the common ambulance manufacturers. They recommend going off engine hours. Because we spend so much time on scenes, on fire standbys, whatever the case may be, that the wheels aren't turning, which affects the odometer, but the engine is still turning. So everything else is still wearing. So per engine hour, we figure 33 miles, which is basically, and that gives us a good wear indicator. Our actual policy is that 100,000 miles, which is between three and four years, a truck goes from frontline to reserve, stays in reserve for about a year, a year, maybe two years in some cases. And then it's surplus or got rid of to volunteer fire departments. We've got several programs in how we get rid of ambulances. But that's kind of the timeframe and how that is figured, all to be working within the parameters of the county policy on vehicle replacement.
Okay, additional questions? It's a conversation we have every year.
Yes, sir. A little bit unique this year, but nothing, nothing major. We're still basically the same operation. We've been just increasing from three to four, and then diesel to gas. And then we've included the stair chairs in the purchase price.
Before they leave, I do want to point out Captain Malden, is this, this is, you're witnessing some of our succession planning. We're not trying to get rid of Jimmy Lance, but, but Captain Malden has been working closely with him. Because obviously, the vehicles and the equipment that goes with them is a really important part of the service and a very technical part of the service.
Great.
Any questions? Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to item 4.4. And this is National Association of Counties Voting Credentials.
Yeah. Commissioner Morris is, and I are going to, to this conference, and you need to have a voting representative. So I would recommend that you nominate and then vote Commissioner Morris to represent you and vote on your behalf. But we need to turn this into the association by this Friday. So you can suspend the rules, vote tonight, and, and then we'll go, go from there.
I will suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes.
Motion to adjourn Mr. Chairman Morris to vote a delegate to represent Cabarrus County at the NACO annual conference in July.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item 4.5, resolution amending the Board of Commissioners 2017 meeting schedule.
Yes, you all selected July 27th as your next elected official summit. This item simply requests you to adopt a resolution amending your schedule and adding that date. Due to notice requirements, it is requested that you suspend your rules again and adopt the resolution this evening.
I will move, we suspend the rules.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And at this time, would entertain a motion to adopt the amended resolution for the Board of Commissioners 2017 meeting schedule. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And this certainly, I think, is a worthwhile thing to do. Our quarterly summit meetings are something that I continue to, that I certainly look forward to and, and hear positive comments from our other elected officials also. So we move to item 4.6, request for letter of recommendation. And Megan will talk with us about that.
Most of you are familiar with the Salisbury-Roan Community Action Agency coming to you in December each year to present their annual report. Commissioner Kiger, for your sake, they're a nonprofit organization established under the Economic Opportunity Act. I think they mainly serve populations at or below the poverty level in Cabarrus and Roan Counties. This particular item came about because Dr. Donna White Cook reached out to Mr. Downs a few weeks ago. They're seeking a Cabarrus County representative to serve on their Board of Directors. And they were hoping to get a letter of support from you for Mr. Wendell Fant. As you can see from your agenda item, Mr. Fant is an employee of Cabarrus County Schools and has previously represented Concord as a district director for the House of Representatives.
Yeah, Wendell's also served in an advisory or sort of a non-voting member. He's, he's, he's attended the meetings over the last 12 months, and that's why they have requested Wendell to be their, their selection, if you're, if you so choose.
Okay, and this is also an item that we need to suspend the rules to vote on tonight or not?
No, it's on your consent agenda, so if you choose to approve it.
Okay, very good. Okay, any questions or comments? I think this is an organization that reports to us annually, but we do not actually fund them.
Yeah, we do not, there are no Cabarrus County funds. However, the federal funds that flow through there, about, I believe it's 51% of their funds that flow through are, are spent in Cabarrus County.
Okay, we move to number five, approval of regular meeting agenda. You all have that before you. Do I hear any adjustments or corrections that need to be made to the regular agenda?
My apology, that is for the NCAA C-C Annual Conference, not the NACO one. I think I looked at those next to each other, and we did not discuss that one. We will need to select an, a voting delegate for that one as well. Because you already approved a voting delegate for the NACO conference a few minutes ago. But we have the annual conference coming up in Durham next month. I can address that at the regular meeting, or we can poll the board and, and come back with a recommendation for you in a couple of weeks.
We can, yeah, we can discuss, we can add it to tonight's agenda, or we can add it to the regular meeting and just vote on it.
How many voting delegates do we get? Is it just one?
I think it's one.
I'd be happy to amend my previous motion and include the national. As well as the state.
Let's see who's going. Commissioner Kiger, Chairman Morris?
Are you going?
Yeah.
Okay, so you were saying amend your motion to?
Include the state conference on the motion that we just appointed Chairman Morris as the voting delegate to the national conference.
Okay. So then we can remove F2 from your consent agenda at the regular meeting? We'll just complete forms for both delegates then?
Right, and so we do have an amended motion to include both organizations and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We had already previously voted to suspend the rules to vote on that, so I think we're covered. Are we covered, Megan?
Sounds great, thank you.
Okay, and we can now delete F2 from our regular meeting agenda. Okay, does anybody see any other concerns? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting agenda with the deletion of item F2. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. We do have need of a closed session tonight. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into closed session per North Carolina general statute 143-318, point 11, A3, 4, and 6, to discuss economic development and personnel. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.